Thasso. Davis. Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. We have Quorum.
Next order of business is our invocation. Our pastor, please come forward.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to lead this city. I pray wisdom over the council and over the mayor, and I pray that you would bless their time as they serve our city. I pray that you would shower your blessings over Rapid City, and I pray that you will lead us and guide us in the years, in the months, and weeks ahead. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like now to recognize Jerry Wright. I'd like to offer an additional prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, 15th, July 2001, 8,000 miles away, one of our finest, Sergeant Lewis, gave his life for our country. May his soul rest in peace. May God and His people be with the family through this time of loss. In the way we offer a moment of silence in his memory.
I'd like to introduce this to the choir. The State of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
The next order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Recognize Gary Brown. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a discussion on abandoned houses, please.
We'll add a discussion on abandoned houses, and we will call that Item 53A. 53A, abandoned houses. And we'll recognize our Acting Public Works Director Dale Tech. Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item under bids, mall drive reconstruction and utility improvements. Project number ST081753.
And we'll recognize Charity Doyle. Charity?
I don't know if it's something that needs to be added, but rather, I'm wondering if Items 22 from the consent calendar and 53 later on on the agenda can or should be considered together?
Okay. You can, we can do it two ways. We can move 22 in conjunction with 53 now, or when we get to Item 22, you can offer a motion to continue it to be heard in conjunction with 53. It can go either way.
Well, based on 22 being a potential approval extension for the permit in question, and 53 being discussion, it doesn't make any sense to me to have it afterwards. What would be the best way to handle that?
If there's no objection from the rest of the council, we'll just go ahead and move Item 22 now to be heard in conjunction with 53.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional items? Items 41 and 45 are duplicated with the same item, so we will scratch Item 45. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Mason. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Next order of business is approval of the minutes for July 5 regular and special council Motion by Brown, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Next order of business is Veteran of the Month, Employee Awards, and Yard of the Month. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the July 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Lester W. Snyder. Les graduated 1939 from Bellerica High School in Massachusetts. He then received a position at the Watertown Arsenal under the United States Army Ordinance Department, and after Pearl Harbor, he was frozen in position until April 1943, when he officially enlisted in the United States Army Air Forces. In 1944, he became a navigation instructor and started flying missions over Japan in 1945. He landed on Iwo Jima in August 1945 in a severely damaged V-29. After separating from the Army Air Forces in September 1946, he earned a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering. In June of 1951, he was recalled to the US AAF as a radar observer, and while stationed with the 95th Bomb Squadron in Korea, he completed 54 missions over North Korea. He was reassigned in 1953 as a navigation instructor in Texas. In September of that year, he became a reservist and enrolled in graduate school in Pennsylvania. Lester became an assistant professor at the School of Mines in September 1959, and he joined the Civil Air Patrol in 1970. He retired as a lieutenant colonel in the US Air Force in 1972, after having been awarded 16 medals, including the DFC with OLC and Air Medal. Lester was a commander of the South Dakota Wing of the Civil Air Patrol from 1974 to 1977, and in 1983, he was recognized as Reserve Officer of the Year by the South Dakota Department of Reserve Officers Association. He retired from the School of Mines as a Professor Emeritus in June 1984, and in 1985, he was elected President of the South Dakota Department of Reserve Officers Association. In April 1987, Lester accepted his present position as bailiff for the Seventh Judicial Circuit of South Dakota, and was awarded the Liberty Bell Award by the Bar Association in 2005. Lester attends the first congregational church and is active in the Canyon Lake Senior Citizen Center, the Air Force Sergeants Association, the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, the AARP, and the Reserve Officers Association. Lester is widower with three children and four stepchildren. Thank you for a service to our country.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Say a few words.
Well, I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the associates for this award. Adds, just adds to everything else, and it's been, I consider it a great honor. In fact, I delayed a trip just to be here. Thank you.
We'll have you take a second. We'll step right over here. Yes. We have the Les Snyder story from Alderman Wright.
A little more heroism on Les Snyder's report that nobody knows about. He does, and I do, and it's a true story. In the 80s, I was with the 109th Group, South Dakota Guard, and we had a soldier in Golden Coyote. I believe it was her brother was critically injured in an accident, motorcycle accident in Billings, Montana. And we were trying to, a way to get that young lady home before her brother died. And we tried every avenue. We had no military aircraft available, we had no commercial aircraft, and I happened to think of Les Snyder, and I said, "What do you think?" He said, "Meet me at the airport." And him, what was the other guy's name that you flew with?
Al House.
Al House, who was from that South Dakota Guard. They took that young lady home to Billings so she could be with her brother before he passed away. So, Les, thank you.
We'll skip around just a little bit, since our Ward 5 council members are up here, and the next award recognizes a citizen from Ward 5. So Donna Sloan, could you please come forward? Donna, we'd like to present you with the Yard of the Month Award. This is presented for your personal commitment to the beautification, maintenance, and overall appearance of your landscape. The City of Rapid City would like to express our sincerest appreciation for your passion and determination. Thank you very much.
My name is Kathy Robeson, and I'm part of the City Beautification Committee, and we are under the Rapid City Parks and Rec group, and Jerry Cole is our mentor. Just a short word about the Yard of the Month. We decided we needed to do something for the city to give people the incentive to, not only to enhance and improve their overall neighborhood, but also give them a pat on the back when they have already done it. And maybe by Donna's example, the neighbors will do better as well. She also receives a $25 gift certificate from, this month, it's from Black Hills Nursery. We have the gift certificates that have been donated from the different landscaping companies in Rapid City. We also, in addition to this, once a year, one of the five winners will receive a Green Glove Award, and that award is a $25 cash award from Rapid City Garden Club. And that is to the yard that best exemplifies the principles of water conservation, zero-scape landscaping, drip irrigation, using the wonderful city compost, and that sort of thing. So if you are interested, please, if you have a neighbor that you feel deserves this award, please nominate them. There is a couple of forms on the desk over here. You can also get that information from the city website and under Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Donna, would you like to stick around? Let's take your picture real quick. Fire Chief, will you join us? They're not here? Now is the time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council in any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the alderpersons present. We do have a one-speaker request form under general comment. I'd like to recognize Michael Galanda. 110 Denver Street. If you could identify yourself, and the floor is yours.
Yes, I'm Michael Galanda. I live at 110 Denver Street. As a few of you and the council member know, I, under Sir, I run IGN Black Hills Pro. We have worked with tsunami relief, and I help with shows on. And under that capacity, with the hills alive, I loved it very much. I was very upset with the fact that the city was forced to take trees down, and the second year in a row, they have not applied to a noise ordinance because of their stage maybe consideration, their decibel levels. I don't know, maybe you need to do a decibel level on the park. I had more neighbors knock on my door complaining about how I supported this, and how it was due to the destruction of the trees, or through the levels of the decibels. I walked down there Saturday, and I thought, yeah, we might need to maybe, they can maybe go to the Central States Fair where it's designed for it, or maybe they can knock their decibel level down, because, you know, honestly, I was just like, well, you're part of this? It was not my, I wasn't a part of it, and yes, I do believe that they should have their event. It's a very nice event, but every other band and every other event, I just did an event with Dogs Without Sweaters that talked about diabetes awareness, and had no other event that gets as many complaints as the hills alive, in my opinion. And maybe they need to be a little more compliant, and my suggestion to the city is that they get a decibel range on the park, because we have several businesses downtown and all the way around that comply. So why can't they comply just because they're a Christian group? No, we have plenty of other businesses, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. We'll now move on to the non-public hearing items, Items 4 through 53. First entertain a motion to open the public comment on Items 4 through 37. Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. The public comment period is now open on Items 4 through 37. We do have a number of speaker request forms on Item 22. We'll start in order that I've received them. We'll start with Frank Morrison, 1302 38th Street, representing Thirsty's. Mr. Morrison, if you could identify yourself, and the floor is yours.
Which one? This one? Thank you, Mayor. My name is Frank Morrison. I'm the owner of Thirsty's, 819 Main Street.
No, I apologize. I made a mistake. We moved Item 22 to be heard in conjunction with Item 53, and so they were to be heard at the same time with the council. Like to wait until then to hear the public comment? So we'll do, I'm sorry to, sorry I did that to you, Frank, if you would hold your comment until we get to Item 53.
Sure, after I get over the pre-game jitters, now you gotta make it.
My fault. I apologize. Okay, so, all of the speaker request forms were for Item 22, so do we have a motion to close public comment for Items 4 through 37?
Second.
Peterson, second by Davis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. Public comment has been closed. Items 4 through 36, consent items. Would anybody like to remove any of the Items 4 through 36? We'll recognize Charity Doyle. Charity?
I'd like to pull Item Number 12, please.
Okay, we'll recognize Bonnie Peterson.
Item Number 23.
12 and 23. Been pulled. Any additional items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar items 4 through 36, with the exception of 12 and 23? We have a motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. Item Number 12, this is a public works item. Public Works Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Number PW071211-05, authorized mayor and finance officer to sign a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the Solid Waste Rate Study. Project number SW11-1940, CIP number 50862, in the amount of $99,366 and no cents. Move approval.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Peterson, and we'll recognize Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my question would be for Dale Tech, if I may. What are the indicators that we need this study done?
Mr. Tech?
Thank you, Mayor. The current rate structure for the solid waste division, for the previous study, the last rate increase was implemented in April of this year, so it's time to look at for the next five years. Just like all of our other enterprise funds, we try to do a five-year rate study to make sure that we're out in front of the costs of doing business, so it is time to do a new rate study based on the expiration of the last increases that were put into ordinance five years ago.
Okay, so this is just a systematic thing that we do? Nothing more?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve. We'll recognize Alderman Mason. Jordan Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to direct my question to Mr. Tech as well. After discussing the item, actually, with Alderwoman Doyle, I am curious, do all of these studies typically range around $100,000?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't answer that question. I believe the water and water reclamation rate study that was recently done was in excess of this amount. I don't have that dollar amount right off the top of my head. That was a bit more of a comprehensive study, and I believe it was considerably more than this.
And additionally, I guess I'm wondering, are we hiring out-of-state consultants, or are we hiring in-state local consultants for these studies typically?
This consultant has a local office. Their main headquarters, I think, in South Dakota is in Sioux Falls, however, they do have an office in Rapid City. I believe most of the work will be done by staff in Rapid City.
Thank you, Mr. Tech.
And we'll recognize Alderwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if it's a necessity at this point? I mean, if we're concerned about our rates, is it unrealistic to just have staff spend a few hours calling around comparable cities, finding out, first of all, if it's warranted, you know, if we're seeing any kind of red flags come up before we spend the money that could very well tell us the same thing that spending a few hours to call would tell us? So the question is, is it unrealistic to do that prior to? At least, that way, based on looking at the data that we could collect in two to four hours, potentially know that we're moving in the right direction before we spend the
Dale?
Thank you. The purpose of the study is to actually set rates for the next five years, and we need to do a complete analysis of what the cost of actually doing business is. And to me, that's more than just seeing what other people are charging. We need to know what the true costs are for fuel, for yard waste collection, and all of the expenses that we have in the system. Therefore, it's a comprehensive study. It's a comprehensive budget to make sure that our rates cover the costs, so we don't have to come back if our rates are too low and ask for supplement to the enterprise fund. So it's more than just checking with what other people are charging. It actually is an analysis of the cost of doing business.
We'll recognize Alderman Wright.
I just want to comment that the rate study, probably the worst way to do it is to call around. Best thing to do is, and Dale's covered it well, is you need to look at what your particular operation is costing, and related fuel, material, machinery, labor, and everything, and come up with the true costs for where you are locally. So it takes more than a few phone calls to do that. It takes a lot of real, down-to-earth analysis of the costs.
And we'll recognize, thank you, Alderman Wright. We'll recognize Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I just have some additional questions based on the comments, and I would direct that back to Mr. Tech. Mr. Tech, you said that part of this study, the comprehensive study, is to find out our current cost of operations and fuel costs, et cetera, which leads me to the question, do we not already, on a, at least semi-annual or quarterly basis, keep track of how much the operation of running the landfill costs, or is that not regularly kept up on?
Yes, we do indeed keep track of those costs. However, to make sure the rates are distributed equitably amongst the different user class, you want to make sure that you analyze how much you're picking up in residential collection versus tipping fees from commercial haulers to make sure that the rates are equitable, so you don't have residential customers subsidizing the commercial haulers or vice versa. So it's also an exercise in equitability to make sure that people are paying their fair share for the service that they receive.
Thank you for clarifying. I yield.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. Item 23. We'll recognize our legal and finance chair. Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sorry, can you say the item number again?
Item 23.
23, thank you. Number LF071311-TAC03, approved event permit from Central States Fair Parade to be held on August 20, 2011. And I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson, and we'll recognize Alderwoman Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that Chief Allender was aware of this. We had discussed it this morning at a gender review, that this is on the same day as the Convoy of Hope.
And we'll recognize our chief, Steve Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're aware of it, and we're prepared to handle both events at once.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. Now we're to the end of the continued consent items, and we're, I'm sorry, we are to, we are to the end of continued consent items, and we are to the non-consent items, 38 through 53. We approve 37, or we continue 37. Oh, you're right. Right. We have somebody like to read 37? Gary Brown, would you please read 37?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sorry, can you say the item number again?
Item 23.
23, thank you.
Number LF071311-TAC03, approved event permit from Central States Fair Parade to be held on August 20, 2011. And I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson, and we'll recognize Alderwoman Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that Chief Allender was aware of this. We had discussed it this morning at a gender review, that this is on the same day as the Convoy of Hope.
And we'll recognize our chief, Steve Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're aware of it, and we're prepared to handle both events at once.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. Now we're to the end of the continued consent items, and we're, I'm sorry, we are to, we are to the end of continued consent items, and we are to the non-consent items, 38 through 53. We approve 37, or we continue 37. Oh, you're right. Right. We have, somebody like to read 37? Gary Brown, would you please read 37?
Thank you, Mayor. Number 10PL066, a request by Renner and Associates LLC for Skyline Pines East Land Company for a preliminary plat for Track 1, Lot 19, and dedicated Fairmont Boulevard right-of-way of Skyline Pines East Subdivision, legally described as a portion of north one-half of the southeast quarter of Section 11, better known as located at the current western terminus of Fairmont Boulevard west of Mount Rushmore Road. Move to continue.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Roberts, to continue until August 1. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Now we are on the non-consent items, Items 38 through 53. Do we have a motion to open public comment? We have a motion, a second, to open public comment on Items 38 through 53. And that would also include several items that were added tonight, including Item 22. Okay? All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries. We are now to public comments. We will start with public comments on Item 22, and now we'll recognize Frank Morrison. I apologize again for the false start.
Thanks again, Mayor. I was already before, now I'm a nervous wreck. The only thing I want to talk about on summer nights is the impact it's had on my business. I said before that I'm the owner of Thirsty's. We're a restaurant at 819 Main Street, and I want to thank Sandy, Sandy Shuan for, and her group for starting Summer Nights. It's been huge for us. I've only been able to attend once because we get so busy that I'm in washing dishes, and the one time that I did attend, my wife called And the one time that I did attend, my wife called me and said, get back here, we're too busy. Seriously, it is huge. We need to extend this, and, I mean, it has been so tremendous for our business. It trickles down. On Friday mornings, I walk down to the bank with the deposit from Thursday, and on the way back, I stop at several other businesses that probably don't participate, and I might buy flowers for my wife, or stop in a jeweler and, or something. But, I mean, it's, it affects everybody downtown in a positive way. The people that are opposed to Summer Nights probably don't participate. They close at five o'clock or five-thirty, and their complaint is that the parking is impacted for a couple of hours on Thursday. In reality, if they would stay open a couple of extra hours, they would, they would realize how much more money they could make. Summer Nights is the greatest thing ever to happen downtown, and we need to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We'll recognize Josh Bruin from sixteen thirty-three Thirty-Eighth Street. Mr. Bruin, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Josh Bruin, owner of Right On Petty Caps. For Summer Nights, I think it's been, I mean, it's really great for me with the new business, all the people around. I mean, there's, especially the first couple of weeks, I mean, we, that's what kept me going. I gave up my main income to get this thing started, and that's, you know, been a positive impact for my own business, as well as, you know, other people that I talked to downtown, some other business owners that say they see, you know, all kinds of traffic in and out of their businesses. They may not sell a whole lot of stuff on Thursday, but everybody's moving around, they've got things to carry, they don't want to necessarily be buying on that day, but they're back on Saturday, you know? So, I mean, I think there's also that level. There's, you know, some of these people wouldn't be downtown if that wasn't going on. And I worked for Frank for two years and still do currently, or will start again, but, you know, I see that impact working there as well. I mean, you know, and it's with any event. Any event that's going on, I don't think that it's the parking issue. If there's something at the Civic Center, Hills Alive is a perfect example earlier, or hockey games, or anything like that, it's going to pull business away from the businesses that are downtown while that event is going on. I think then the main focus would be to, to focus on, you know, getting that business before or after those particular events. So I think, I mean, and I think it's just a small puzzle piece to everything that's going on in downtown Rapid City. It's, I mean, I think it's going in a good direction, obviously for my business is, you know, something that I'd like to help push the direction that I believe that it's going as well, so. But I'd like to also thank all the Summer Nights crew for, even for the entertainment, not even on a business level, of, you know, all the fun that it brings to Rapid City and whatever, so, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Bruin. And I recognize Sandra Schwan. If you could identify yourself for the record.
I'm Sandra Schwan. I'm the president of Rapid City Summer Nights Incorporated. Thank you, Mayor Quaker. Thank you, council members. You've all received my letter outlining the reasons I believe we should continue Summer Nights in the current location. Tonight, I would like to speak for a moment on the history of the event, as most of you were not on the council, in the early days and the formative days of Summer Nights. In the fall of two thousand and seven, thirty individuals were selected for the Leadership Rhapsody class of two thousand and seven. I was among those selected, as were current board members Joel Landine, Christina Weeby, and Mary Seibert. For those familiar with Leadership Rhapsody, you know that at the final class, you choose a legacy project. Bob Fuchs of the Rapid City Downtown Association was among our speakers that evening, and he presented a project that ultimately became known as Summer Nights. Several members of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the RCDA, had traveled to Boise, Idaho, where they took advantage of Boise's event called Alive After Five that is very similar to Summer Nights. And they learned firsthand the impact that Alive After Five had on downtown Boise, Idaho. As you recall, in the fall of two thousand and seven, that was also the time in which Roger Brooks presented his report to the citizens of Rapid City, recommending, among many other things, a downtown event venue. Only seem logical that if Alive After Five helped Boise, Idaho revitalize their downtown, that perhaps Summer Nights maybe could jumpstart downtown Rapid City's revitalization. So on June twelfth of two thousand and eight, Summer Nights debuted on Seventh Street, and approximately seven hundred and fifty people attended, and we were thrilled. We thought we were awesome. Last week, it's estimated twelve thousand people were strolling about in downtown Rapid City, and we have simply outgrown Seventh Street. It needs to be said that the members of the Summer Nights team worked very closely with the Rapid City Police Department, with the Fire Department, and with Public Works to formulate a plan to expand Summer Nights in a way that was viable and safe and with the least amount of inconvenience. We did not throw this idea together at the last minute, and we have listened to the constituents and the downtown business owners about the issues and the problems, and we've made adjustments wherever possible. We can't, however, please everyone nor accommodate every request made of our team. The mission of Rapid City Summer Nights is to create a family-friendly arts and entertainment festival that will enhance Rapid City's public image, increase tourism, promote community involvement, and assist in the revitalization and the growth of our historic downtown. We think we have accomplished our goal, and I am very, very proud of the Summer Nights team. We also know that there are many people opposed to our expansion and to Summer Nights in general, that were in two thousand and eight and there will be in two thousand and twelve. There are those that even claim, you can't fight City Hall. Well, I disagree. For the past four years, many organizations, as well as Summer Nights, have been here fighting for the downtown and revitalization. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose. At the end of the day, what's important is that we show up. Thank you for your time.
We'll recognize Burton Long. Mr. Long?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Burton Long, owner and operator of Parkway Restaurant. This year is the first time that we went and participated downtown, and we found that outside of the weather being a little warm, it's been a great event. I can't hardly leave the people that show up and, like everybody says, miller round and go through the other businesses. So I guess I'm asking for your support for Sandy to keep this thing going. It's a thumbs up for us. Thank you.
We recognize Terry Nelson. Mr. Nelson?
Good evening, and congratulations, everyone, on the election and everything. I own Six Eleven Main Building Downtown, has a dance studio in it, and also I'm chairman of the bid board. That's a business improvement district, Level One and Level Two downtown, and there are ten business people on the, on the council, so that's what I am. But I'm here tonight to talk about joy. I don't know, if you, if you haven't been downtown during Summer Nights, you just have to come. I tell you what, you'll, you'll see babies there, all the way to people that are reaching the century mark. You really will. But I just want to talk about joy a minute. Joy means all the way from, the other night, they had two people in wheelchair, they were electric, and they weren't getting around very good, but they were holding hands, looked like the first love. You could tell he, that he had loved his life, and I think she did too, and they were holding hands. And there was another little lady that was in a wheelchair, and she was singing along with the band. It goes, it starts from there. It also goes, I don't know if you've ever been down through Art Alley or not, but it might be the single mother selling crafts, joy, it may raise a little money. It could be the, I call it the worship board band. I'm not sure what it was, but a bunch of local people having fun, adults clapping with them and the whole thing. Joy, all the way around. Right next door to them and down about a couple of other buildings were some young, both men, I mean, both kids, both the boys and girls, and they were breakdancing. I didn't, I didn't know, breakdancing. And then the one that really got me, talk about joy, and it, it just brings tears to your eyes. Three little girls, probably, I'd say probably five, six, or seven, dressed in very nice dresses, long dresses. Guess what they were doing? They had violins, and they were playing, and they had the little cup out there. Listen, these folks are going to be the orchestra people in Rapid City, you know, four, five, six, and they're doing that, joy all over. There was a gentleman there, he was, he said he was playing Christian songs. He was playing Christian songs. He was pretty good at country and western, too, same guy. And it's interesting, some other things. It was interesting, not last week, but the week before, it was on a Friday night, right after Summer Nights. I happened to walk into Thirsty's, and there was a couple sitting there from Jacksonville, Florida. They've been on a tour, or they're on a tour for all the national parks. They'd been two nights here, and this was Friday night. They said, what's going on in this city? It's alive. People are having fun. They just couldn't get over it. They said it would be impossible to have this in Jacksonville, Florida. First of all, Jacksonville, Florida evidently is fairly dirty, graffiti, you know, we have a great police department and also sheriff's office. It was safe. They just couldn't get over it. Thursday night was interesting. I'm involved quite actively with South Dakota State University at Brookings. They had a deal again at Thirsty's. It sounded like I was sponsoring Thirsty's. I'm not, I just happened to be there. And anyway, there are a lot of people from Brookings, and then also there are a number of people there from Sioux Falls, because they had the Corvette relic coming, coming out. And it was, it was very interesting. It's sort of interesting, people in Brookings couldn't get over it. Guess who, where Jon Stewart came from, who's the head of the plaza downtown, Brookings. They said, boy, we shouldn't let him go. So I just want to say Sandy and her group are doing a fabulous job. If you haven't seen it, I know each one of you want to do a good job for Rhapsody, but come down and see it, because it's really joy. And I got to tell you, folks, you may not realize it, but we've got the best city in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. We'll recognize Michael Gwanda. Michael?
Thank you very much. I, I'm going to read from my script. I'm hoping you approve the Summer Nights for one of many reasons. I, as you know, I'll say again, I run IGN Black Hills Pro, and I run IGN Black Hills Space Pro on Facebook. I use those events during the summer to help fill content on my page. I thank Summer Nights very much for allowing me to do that. And through, after that, I have people in Colorado that are pushing this event. I help, I believe I do my best to help tourism, and I use my ability with Facebook, my webpage. And even when I see ongoing tourists that want a place to go, video crew that want a place just to relax, I help promote that event, and I help wish them a good time, you know? And I just can't say enough of it, you know? We have a lot of fun down there, and we do need to keep it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll recognize Anthony DiMaro, Murphy's.
How's it going? Thank you for having me in to speak. I'd like to address, I've only been back in town for about seven months now, so Summer Nights is a brand-new thing for me. So I'll first address it from a professional standpoint on behalf of Murphy's, and then speak to it more personally, kind of as my generation, some of what I've seen so far. So first and foremost, I'd have to certainly agree with Frank that Summer Nights is amazing for business. It is on par with Friday and Saturday nights. That's an incredible thing, to have a bonus night every week to add to your business. Does an amazing amount to be able to have extra staff on hand, to be able to employ more people. I actually pretty much double my staff on a Thursday for what I would on a Wednesday. That's huge. That's more money in people's pockets that are going around to spend in these businesses throughout the city. Also, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to market downtown. It, I go to Bully Blend in the morning, and people ask, you know, I hear tourists asking, what's the band tonight? Gives people something to do, gives people something to talk about, so I think it's great. So from a business standpoint, huge thumbs up, really liking, and I think it's very important for our business. But I want to speak, I see as one of, probably the one more younger people speaking on behalf of it, I think it represents a bit of an evolution in Rapid City. What I mean by that is that oftentimes, cities don't think about the younger generations because they're often not represented as a whole in government, in the, in the districts. So what I've noticed, at least from my standpoint, is something fun for the younger population to be able to do. My girlfriend, for example, who doesn't even drink, is there with all of her friends and family who don't drink, and they're all sitting on the outskirts, and they've got their babies, and everybody's having a great time. And it's just a fun thing. It doesn't cost anything. It's a free event that gives you another reason to say, I like Rapid City, it gives me a reason to live here. So I think, more importantly, thinking about it strategically from what it actually does for an entire generation of people that are looking for something to do, that maybe don't want to spend any money, or don't have a lot of money to spend. It's something to give people just a good reason to kick back, enjoy and have a good time, and enjoy a little bit of their, of their time off. So that's just what I wanted to say. All right? Thank you.
And we'll recognize Michelle Peregrin, Botticelli's. And if you could identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
I'm Michelle Peregrin, Botticelli Restaurante. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm with everyone here. Summer Nights is great. It brings a lot of people downtown. Downtown's vivacious. There's a lot happening. Everything that they've said tonight has been wonderful. My issue with it is that because of the traffic flow and Main Street being closed at the hour that it is during the day, we are losing some business at lunchtime, and we are definitely, some nights in half for our sales in the evening. And so that's, that's a concern for me, because I have twenty-five employees. You know, summer's the time that we make our money, and when we're not doing the sales that we do, it makes it very difficult for us to, you know, go on with our business in our location. I, I don't, it's not threatening. I think that if we could propose maybe moving maybe to Kansas City Street, where it's not a thoroughfare to the main flow of traffic to the west side of town, I would think that would be a wonderful thing. And all of the people that have the business that is still coming, I don't think they would be harmed by that. I spoke with some businesses, and I didn't want it to be restaurants versus retail stores, but I did speak to some other businesses. Negabauers, for one I could mention, the floral shop, with the closing of the day, maybe one or two o'clock, they're starting to take the parking away, they're affected. And of course, they don't do evening time. So I'm just trying to find a happy medium of, do we stay out late, stay out later for the after-bar crowd, for after nine, when the Budweiser place closes down? Do we stay open later for that? Do we open earlier during the day to catch some of the business that maybe Thirsty's and Murphy's is doing, because we have our set schedule? So I'm just trying to make it work. I think it's a great thing. I just hope we can make it fair for everybody. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll recognize Josh Snyder, who's speaking on item fifty-two. Mr. Snyder?
We have one more speaker request from our, for fifty-three, which would be, was with mine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to fifty-three in just a minute. This is Friday.
It was for twenty-two. We had, she, she had turned in one. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see another speaker request for him. If you could come forward.
It's for Mallory Schwan.
It was with mine, right behind you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mallory, if you could come forward.
I filled it out, I promise. My name is Mallory Schwan. I am the Kids and Families Activities Coordinator for Summer Nights. For the last four years, I've served as Summer Nights as the Kids' Street Coordinator, and in those years, I've watched the event grow and evolve, and I'm extremely proud to be a part of this team. Hosting our event in the street creates particular challenges, especially pertaining to kids' activities. On our busiest nights, some three hundred-plus children and their families come through the Kids' Street, and their safety is my number-one concern. I'm proud to say that the only injuries ever reported to me have been a skinned knee and a scraped elbow. Last year, I watched with increasing concern as more and more families crossed the intersection at Seventh and St. Joseph Street. While the police cadets did an excellent job in assisting patrons and guiding traffic, there simply became a greater risk as the event grew. I firmly believe that a busy intersection between our Kids' Street and the music arena of our event compromises the safety of our patrons, especially their children. I've spoken with dozens of parents this year who believe our event to be safer and of a smarter design by adjoining the Kids' Street with a music arena on Main. I also believe that our current layout creates a greater sense of community, a strong focus of the mission of Summer Nights. The flow of the event is more enjoyable, and parents report that their children, as well as themselves, feel more like a part of the event as a whole. This sense of community and family is something extremely important to me. I volunteer with Summer Nights because I believe in what we do. We bring our community together. I've been approached by numerous families who tell me how grateful they are to have an event that their kids love and that everyone in Rapid City can afford. A family with two or three kids or more can come down to have hours of entertainment for only a few dollars, or entirely free if they choose. I think it is essential to the vitality of a city to have spaces and events where people can feel this sense of community and closeness without a great expense. I know I've seen it happen on my end of the event, and I strongly urge the council to make the decisions necessary to ensure it continues. On another note, I ask the council to please remember that our event reaches beyond the boundaries of Seventh and Main. Through my position, I work with many different charitable and community organizations to find volunteers for my Kids' Street activities. Summer Nights makes a generous donation for their group for each night they serve, and this money is used to fund youth groups, charities, nonprofits, sports programs, and more. I also work with a number of area nonprofits to promote their services, such as Youth and Family Services, Authentic Youth Civic Engagement, and the Public Library. I would be dismayed to tell them I could no longer offer this opportunity for outreach and volunteerism. In closing, I respectfully ask the city council to grant us our current layout event permit for the remaining seven nights. for the remaining seven nights. My priority has always been to have the best event we can possibly put on in the safest way possible for every patron, and I believe that we've done so. I'm extremely humbled by the support and enthusiasm of the families I meet each week. My excitement for Summer Nights is fueled by them and their desire to see this event through the rest of the season. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now, we'll recognize Josh Snyder on item 52. Mr. Snyder?
I also filled out a sheet for 22.
I had quite a stack here. I didn't think I missed anybody. What's your name, sir?
John Riker. Hi, I'm John Riker, 1116 Ninth Street. I brought my daughter Maya tonight. We go just about every week to Summer Nights, so thanks to all the businesses that support it and the big group that supports it. And Sandy, special thanks to you. I'm sorry, I don't know anybody else's name on your committee there. Definitely recognize the business owners we've got here. I'm here to advocate for the current layout that they have that uses Main and Seventh. It's definitely a benefit to all the families that use it, that there's one continuous and contained area. We can go through Art Alley, we can go down Seventh, we can go down Main, we can use all the amenities that they have there. So, we certainly enjoy it every night. I know Maya enjoys it every time we go, definitely the bouncing castle. So, thanks to the city for putting on a great event and everybody that makes it happen, whether you're a business owner or on the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. And we will recognize Delbo, last but not least.
He had to leave.
He had to leave. Okay. All right. And now, we will recognize Josh Snyder, item 52.
Wow, tough act to follow. My name's Josh Snyder. I'm from 1422 North Seventh Street, Rapid City. I'm here tonight honored by this appointment, potentially to the planning commission. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to help in Rapid City and serve the community. So, that's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. You were strongly recommended by your ward four council members and I'm sure you'll do us proud.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 53, we have two speaker request forms, versus from Sandra Schwan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I really wasn't sure what item 53 was, but I thought it was about Summer Nights. So, I just wanted to say that if there's some questions about that when it comes up, I will be here to answer those.
And we'll recognize Kurt Polkart. Mr. Polkart?
I guess I don't know what 22 was or 53 is, but my intent is to speak on behalf of Summer Nights and basically just echo all the comments, virtually all the comments that have come before me. I don't know the gentleman that spoke on behalf of Murphy's, but I couldn't agree more with what he said about us younger members of the, maybe he wasn't talking about me, I don't know. It is fun. It is a fun place to go. And the important thing, I think, to remember is that it is free of charge and open to anybody in the community. That is the type of event that it has come to represent, and I think we need more of that in Rapid City, certainly not less of it. So, I don't know what 53 is, I don't know what 22 is, I don't know what kind of motion you require, but count me in favor.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone that wanted to speak tonight? On any item from item 38 through 53A? Okay? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public comment? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Mason to close public comment on items 38 through 53A. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 38. Alderman Mason.
Mayor, Legal and Finance 071311, Tac 16, first reading of ordinance number 5729, making the executive assistant program coordinator within the mayor's office and officer of the city by adding section 2.12.070 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move for approval.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, go ahead.
Next item is Legal and Finance 071311, Tac 17, and it's the first reading of ordinance number 5730 to increase the amount of purchases that department directors are authorized to make on behalf of the city of Rapid City by amending section 3.04.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move for approval.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Wright. Any discussion? We'll recognize our assistant city attorney, Joel Landine.
Thank you, Mayor. There's two actual ordinances linked. In discussing this ordinance, it was expressed some concern, the fact that the language said reasonable attempts shall be made by all department directors to obtain informal quotations from all local suppliers for any item in excess of 2,000 but less than the bid limit. We would like to change that, so it just says reasonable attempts shall be made by all department directors to obtain informal quotations from local suppliers so that there doesn't appear to be a requirement that you have to make sure you hit every local supplier, but that you still have a requirement to check with local suppliers. That was not approved at the Legal and Finance, so we wanted to highlight that change and would ask that if you're in agreement with it, you approve that version to move on to second reading. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floors for approval? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 40, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 40 is number 11PL014, a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for a preliminary plat for proposed lots 1 through 8 of Block 1, lots 1 through 6 of Block 2, and Lot 1A and Lot 1B of Block 3 of Prairie Meadows subdivision, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of West Nike Road and Country Road. I move for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 41, Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 11TP014, approve the Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 42, this is confirmation of appointment of Richie Nordstrom as the city council representative for the Sign Co. Board of Appeals.
We're to approve.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Davis. We'll recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that it was okay for me to abstain from this motion. Thank you.
It is. Okay. Any further discussion or opposition? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. One abstention from Alderman Nordstrom. Item 43, recommendations for executive session and request for direction. I'm sorry, Jordan, old habits die hard and I started, I read that in for you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 44.
Approve the event permit from the YMCA for a street dance to be held on August 5th, 2011, and I move for approval.
We have a motion by Jordan Mason and a second by John Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're skipping item 45. Item 46, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. 46 is number PW062811-11, approval request for exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalk along 2540 East Highway 44 per city ordinance 12, period 16, period 080 for Lot 15RA and Lot 5, Hillsview subdivision, located in section 521N, Rapid City, South Dakota. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Roberts, and we'll recognize Alderman Sasso.
One of the questions that I guess I would like clarification on this, the owner did not want to sign a waiver of right to protest, and I just want to make sure if that is correct still.
Recognize our acting Public Works Director, Dale Tech.
I must apologize, Mr. Mayor. I was in a sidebar over here. Could you repeat the question, please?
That, on this particular item, that no waiver of future right to protest was signed?
That is correct. The applicant with his discussion with the committee did not want to sign the warp and that was the way that the item was recommended for approval at Public Works Committee is that the appeal be approved without the warp being signed.
May I ask for, as far as finance, for some clarification as far as what would happen if at some point down the road we wanted to add in a sidewalk in that area and there was no warp signed?
That might be a better question for our city attorney's office. We'll recognize Joel Landine.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Really where the waiver of right to protest came from is that citizens by statute have a right to protest street improvements. They can legally, if a certain number of them object to it, block the project. In my research, that doesn't really apply to other public improvements, but what we've done in the past is use the waiver of right to protest as a tool, that we have the landowner sign, that at least puts subsequent landowners on notice that this potential public improvement is outstanding and they may be required to install it in the future. So, if three owners down the road, we order in the sidewalk, traditionally what happens is somebody may come in and say, well, I didn't understand when I bought that, that this was hanging over my head. If there's a waiver of right to protest, in the chain of title, they know. So, the reality is, purely legal sense, it doesn't really have much of an impact. By state statute, the city could order in sidewalks and assess the cost of such to the abutting property, whether or not a waiver of right to protest is signed. And even with a waiver of right to protest, really all that would prevent is the legal mechanism on the street improvements. Anybody could essentially come into the council and ask you not to order in a sidewalk or not to build a public improvement, whether or not they had signed a waiver of right to protest. So, the legal consequence of it is really nothing. However, in the future, if somebody else purchases that property, they may not realize this is out there, but they would be in the same position as everyone else that the city could order in the sidewalk at any time and they would be responsible for that cost.
One more question. How does that change if the property owner, which I believe the owner of that property also owns an additional piece of property nearby, if they own more than 50% of where we're looking at adding that sidewalk?
Again, there's no provision for protesting any public improvement other than street, street improvements. So, the sidewalk would be able to be ordered in no matter how much property they owned.
Anything further?
Did you have something you'd like to add to clarify or? Okay.
Okay. We'll recognize Alderman Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Joel said it way better than I could have, and that's my understanding is that we could order in the sidewalk later and go with it. Thank you, sir. Good job.
We'll recognize Joel Landine.
I believe I already said everything I had to say and for some reason, my light didn't go off.
Recognize Bonnie Peterson, Alderman Peterson.
I have another question for Mr. Landine. Is this then an effort that we're going to, or new process that we're going to start moving away from having people sign waiver of right to protest? I mean, because we've had lots of people sign them, and so I'm just wondering why this person is not doing the same, I guess.
I don't believe it is going to be a staff-organized effort to move away from that process. My understanding, why the reason it's in front of you this way isn't because staff supported it, it's because the landowner has refused to sign the waiver of right to protest and the committee, in spite of that, still recommended approval of it and sent it on to council in that form. My understanding is that staff would support the signing of the warp, but that was not what was recommended by the committee.
Okay, and the gentleman that is bringing this forward, he's aware that we can order in these sidewalks, even if he doesn't sign the warp?
That was discussed during the meeting and yes, it was stated at that time that we could order in the sidewalks, whether or not, he just did not feel at this time, as I recall, that he wanted to sign that or potentially commit future landowners to that obligation.
Okay, because I'm concerned because we've certainly had requests to put sidewalks in this area and, so anyway, I have concerns about that and as long as the gentleman knows that sidewalks may yet be coming to him, I guess I can live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Peterson, as chair of Public Works when this came up, we had a pretty good discussion with Mr. Wilson about that. And he was of the opinion, one, it was our responsibility to put it in, not him. We ran into that before. And also that he has an ongoing building project and he was concerned about if he had to put in the price of the sidewalk at that, this time, that might affect his ability to do that. So, the committee decided, bringing him back up to the podium, that as long as state statute allowed us to put that sidewalk in and charge him back. And he understood that and he said, yes, I understand that. And he was very honest. He said, why, you understand you're going to do that? Yep. He said, I think I can wait it out till my kids have to pay for it. So, we went ahead and passed it this way with Mr. Olson knowing that at any time the city can require him to put that sidewalk in. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Sasso. One thing with this item and some of the attached documentation that we had, there were pictures that included an area that was worn from footpath, and knowing that there was a request for sidewalk in that area, I know it could potentially be a sidewalk to nowhere right now, but personally, I would rather be supporting citizens and pedestrian safety than particularly without going with the warp. I could see potentially that we may still have some fight, even if we have good legal standing, so thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for approval of the request for an exception to waive the requirement. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 40, was there a no?
47. Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on one moment. Motion carries with one no from Alderman Sasso.
Number 47, number PW071211-08, road course sampling, and I yield the floor to Alderman Sasso.
Alderman Sasso.
Just basically wanted to let everyone know that we are looking at creating some changes in that and just wanted to acknowledge.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Doyle to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Bids. Recognize Mary Floto from our finance office. Mary?
Item number 48 is the Kepp's Reservoir Control Valve Station. The advertising authority was $450,000, engineer estimate $507,000. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $437,000 to Dean Kurt's Construction Company.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 49.
Item number 49 is the downtown traffic signal system, and this, there was only one bid on this. Advertising authority and engineer's estimate were both $300,000. Recommendation- Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $288,947 to Traffic Control
We have a, we have a motion by Mason, and a second by Wright. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty.
Item number fifty is an informal quote, and it's for the Rapid City Water Reclamation Facility Chlorination Building Rerof. There were two bids, and the recommendation is to award the informal quote in the amount of $40,755 to Black Hills Roofing.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one.
Item fifty-one is, is a change. This was actually approved at the July 5th meeting, and this recommendation is to approve the change in funding source from line item forty-two ninety-six to forty-three twenty.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Davis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one A.
Item fifty-one A is the Mall Drive Utilities Improvement. This is a project with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, and the recommendation is to award the total combined bid in the amount of $3,251,226.25 to Stanley J. Johnson
Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two. Alderman Mason, would you read that into the record?
Absolutely. Confirm reappointment of Steve Rollinger and appointment of Len Weimer, Jan Swank, and Mr. Joseph Snyder to the Planning Commission for three-year terms, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-two. Alderman Mason, would you read that into the record?
Yes, to approve the event permit for summer nights, and I move for discussion.
Moving to-
Oh, I'm sorry, move for approval. Sorry.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Peterson for approval. Any discussion on item twenty-two? Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the supporters that came out to speak tonight on behalf of summer nights. With twenty-two, one of the things that is in conjunction with fifty-three, I brought forward fifty-three because there's been a number of businesses that are directly abutting the summer nights event, that have had some suggestions and recommendations to make this a little better event. And with that in mind, and also with the comments from Ms. Schwan on trying to improve the community involvement of this event, it seemed almost prudent that maybe we consider having a special city council meeting to allow some of the downtown businesses that are directly involved. I've heard from a number of people, from Murphy's, Thirsty's, Parkway, and the dance studio tonight, and of those, many of them are down the street and are close, but the business is directly abutting. I keep getting emails and other suggestions as we keep going along. So keeping in mind that as this event grows, as noted from Ms. Schwan, an estimated from 750 to over 12,000, maybe it would be a good time to allow some of those businesses directly involved, to allow them to give their recommendations and suggestions to us for maybe the next following year, along with also keeping in mind the Main Street Square event. So I just want to keep some of those thoughts in mind as we move forward. I think that we can make this a, an overall positive event for everyone involved, and really make this a participatory program and event for all the businesses. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just brief comments about the, the summer nights events. In the previous council, there was a lot of emails I got secondhand on that. I guess you would call me the council-elect at that point, so I was privy to some of the information that was emailed to me. So thank you for the, to the folks that forwarded that information to me. Since I've been sworn in, I have not heard from those folks again. And I'm comfortable with the, the position or the comments that Sandra has made to the, I'm gonna say, Legal and Finance Committee meeting, that there was, if I recall right, there was four protesters at that time, I'm gonna say the end of June. There were approximately four protesters at that time. So I'm comfortable with the point that Sandy made during the Legal and Finance Committee, that those people are not totally on board, but they've changed or leaned toward a, a better percentage of understanding what Summer Nights is all about. So my question is, and I'm not sure who the question goes to, is are we still comfortable with the people that have been protesting that, the summer nights? And first of all, let me direct that question to the chief, and maybe perhaps other people that are involved with traffic safety as well. Thank you.
Steve Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to be honest, I've not had contact personally with any of the businesses complaining. I've heard some secondhand discussion about it, so I don't know how to answer the question if we're comfortable about them. I couldn't even list them at this point.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief, 'cause I haven't heard from the, the people that were, were objecting, objecting to the initial permit either. So I've seen and heard a lot about emails from the previ, from the previous council. But again, I haven't seen anything for follow-up on those concerns that those other businesses have, have made those comments at that time. So right now, I'm very supportive of the summer nights and the activity that's taking place there. Oh, I just thought of one more question for the chief of police, Chief Allender. If you could address the traffic signal issue, I'm gonna call it at this, at this point, and using your staff for the traffic signal or traffic control. Thank you.
Well, of course, Thursday night downtown traffic is different than other nights downtown traffic. We've taken some special precautions, the most visible and obvious of which is having an employee standing on the corner of Fifth and Omaha, manually operating the light to regulate that traffic. And the result that we see from that is, I can sum it up by saying this. Last Wednesday morning, I had a meeting in the Civic Center, so going north on Fifth and wanting to turn on Omaha, I sat through two and a half red lights, green light cycles there at that light. Rush hour, morning traffic. On summer nights, on Thursday nights, with our employee running this light, the lines are longer, the backup is back to Main Street of cars trying to get through Omaha and to turn left on Omaha. And generally speaking, we run all of those cars through on one signal, on one light. So it's, it's visually intimidating because there's a lot more cars, but that traffic really does move fairly well, given the volume of traffic. And there has been, since this year's summer nights event started, an accident on Fifth Street down near St. Joe that did not appear in any way to be related to traffic jam or any, anything to do with summer nights.
One more question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. On a comparison, if you will, Chief Allender, if you could, if you can, address this question. In a similar comparison with, say, a railroad train coming through during a rush hour, can you give a, an example of the differences between the summer nights traffic versus a, a train going through during rush hour?
Well, a train coming through at rush hour is a disaster, in my opinion. And that traffic, of course, doesn't move, and it backs up clear south of Kansas City Street, approaching Quincy Street in some cases. So cars at that point are taking side streets and trying to get around during summer nights, routine Thursday summer night traffic. The traffic moves, and there may be, there may be waits, but our employees who have been there on-site for every single summer nights event have stated that they don't believe a, a car has had to wait more than one to two minutes for any size of a traffic jam that's there. Now, when you're in traffic, it seems very long, but they're there for the purpose of observing traffic and evaluating what, what type of a burden this is on the motoring public. Their opinion is that it's really tolerable, although, again, visually intimidating.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. We'll recognize Alderman Peterson.
Thank you. I see this is a much bigger issue than summer nights, because what happens to summer nights is gonna be reflected in what happens in Main Street Square. Main Street Square, I'm sure, is gonna overflow into the streets at times, and so as a city, we need, and get all the players together and figure out what is the best strategy, what's gonna help with that. I love, I love summer nights. I have a great time when I go down there. I love, like Mr. Nelson said, it's great to see all the people having a great time. I think Alderman Mason, it was good for you to bring this up, so we can kinda have a discussion, you know, of different issues. We need to work with the businesses down there, because I know some of them are suffering while others are benefiting, and so it's, you know, we gotta find the, the balance. And I guess, 'cause what I'm trying to figure out is what we're gonna do, because I think, like I said, this goes beyond summer nights, it's, 'cause how, how as a city are we gonna operate events? And, you know, it's conceivable we could have an event at Memorial Park, event at Main Street Square, summer nights. I mean, it's, it's feasible, we could have something going on that whole time. And so we've got to figure out what's gonna work for the businesses. And I know that Mr. Mason is planning to make a, a motion to have the, the businesses come down and, and give us solution, potential solutions as they see it. And the, one of the questions, things that we discussed was, there's some people out with, out in the sidewalks, and why doesn't other businesses up and down Main Street come out into the sidewalks? And it's been presented that perhaps they need to have a sidewalk vending license, I believe is the name of that. So it's, the city can look and see what options we can do to maybe waive or do legally what we need to do to help those businesses maximize, 'cause they're gonna have to think outside the box, because Main Street Square is not gonna go away, and that's gonna be potentially all year, potential for different events. And I would hope that when we, if we do set up this meeting, that the businesses will come forward and share their pros, you know, their ideas, and not be afraid, 'cause what we wanna do is work together to have a, an outstanding event. And it's been very exciting, 'cause every time I, I'm out, there's people from different cities, and they're like, "Wow, we can't believe you're doing this in Rapid City. You know, our city would never do this." And they think it's awesome, so, I mean, they're gonna go home and tell their friends. And all this is gonna come back to benefit Rapid City. You know, it might not be you that day that gets benefited, but somebody will benefit from it. And anyway, I, I look forward to the further discussion, but I certainly will be voting to extend summer nights. Thank you.
We recognize Alderman Wright.
Thank you, sir. We do have a motion to approve, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I just wanna go on the record as being absolutely in support of the extension for the next six nights, or whatever it is that you need. And I agree that as things have grown, and as things are changing next year, that we need to work to improve next years, whatever's going on. And I'm sure that Sandra and her staff will work with Botticelli's and everybody else to resolve any issues that possibly can be resolved. And I know I walked the Eighth Street to Fifth Street last Thursday, Thursday before, and I was amazed at the amount of business and activity going on. I even walked into most of the businesses that were open. I was impressed, and it's an extremely positive thing that's occurring, and I totally support it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We recognize John Roberts. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I wanna say I support some summer nights, too. I enjoy it. I think there needs to be some changes. I feel real uncomfortable that we're putting a special event in front of some of our businesses. No offense to you people. I mean, no offense. Chief, I have a question for you. Are we being reimbursed for the person that's running the light?
Chief Allender. No.
We should be. Just, okay, I was curious. I got a question for Dale Tech. What are our traffic studies for traffic going down Main? What is the busiest time?
Tech? Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know that I can answer the busiest time. Based on our traffic counts, we believe there's about 900 vehicles an hour that are westbound on Main Street between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. So the hours between 3:00, 4:00, and 5:00 p.m., you're talking 2,700 vehicles that have to be detoured onto alternate routes.
Thank you. Okay, Sandra, it's your turn. Swan, please, can I ask you a few questions?
Go ahead.
Now, we've changed your time to set up by two and a half hours. Is that what it was over last year?
The time to set up is exactly the same as it was last year.
It was.
The, the police, the permit, there's two separate issues. We send the permit to the police department for the hours that we need to set up. What we requested was 2:30 to 10:30 for setup and tear down in the event. The police department reviews the event permit. They worked with my team, as, as well as the fire chief and Robert Ellis, to determine how best to remove the cars from the street so that we can set up at 2:30. I have airmen from Ellsworth setting up. I have the teen court, juvenile diversion, and we have to have the cars off the street before the equipment arrives at 2:30. So the, the two hours that you're referring to has always been in place. At 12:30, the police cadets, as volunteers, and we make a donation to, by the way, come down and begin to start moving cars. They wait until about 1:30 before they start coning spots off. At 12:30, they're there as a presence to make sure that the people who are pulling in understand that an event's gonna be starting soon, and they hand out little flyers that say that cars need to be gone no later than 2:30, because that's when the equipment arrives. But we haven't changed our setup times since 2008. They're exactly the same.
Is there any way you could shorten that setup time?
Not unless you wanna hire me a big crew. But the people that we have, I think they do amazing job getting it done in 2:30, and I would encourage every single one of you to come down some afternoon at 2:30 and watch how it sets up, because it's actually a machine. I have a crew that sets up the beer stations, I have a crew that sets up the kids, I have a crew that sets up the fence, and it gets done in little or no time, considering the space that they're setting up.
What time are you usually set up by?
We are set up by about 4:30, quarter to 5:00. We do have to set up prior to the start time, because we do, once in a while, have technical difficulties. If we tried to push that back so that we were set up exactly at 5:00 o'clock, we would, we could have problems. For example, one night, we had problems with the power. Had we not set up till 5:30, the event would've had to have been canceled, because by the time we realized there was a power problem, that was about 45 minutes to an hour and a half to res, to fully resolve. So we need that cushion in case there's a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And we recognize Kerry Brown. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the event permit, and will vote in support of that. However, I also support Alderman Mason's idea for having a separate meeting. Reason why is ever since this thing got started, especially the change, we've had comments made that there are others who don't support this. There are others who are afraid to come and speak to the council or do something in front with city government and that. I can't believe that's true. I've been in small business all my life, and if I may say, if you've got enough courage, guts, and fortitude to go into small business- And if I may say, if you've got enough courage, guts, and fortitude to go into small business, you're not afraid of us at all. You just need an opportunity to come and express your views. That's why I like Alderman Mason's idea of having a separate meeting. I will support that and encourage everybody, the others, to come down like Michelle and say, I have a problem, but I want to work, or I don't want anything to do. I want to hear that. And I want to face to the name of others. So, I will support that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We recognize Alderman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments first to my colleagues, Mr. Nordstrom and Mr. Brown. Richie, I've been into at least 35 businesses at this point. And for every great success story on increased revenue, I have unfortunately an opposing one on lost revenue. And to address Mr. Brown, the others are reluctant to speak out because at first they had a little bit and there's been some animosity generated, such as customers saying, you know, I'm not going to support you or patronize your business if you don't support summer nights. So, they felt, okay, we need to backpedal and just shut up. So, their voice has been stifled. What I really feel is that six weeks ago, this council made a promise to business owners. And regardless of the fact that we all appreciate summer nights and there's tremendous support for it, this council made a promise that if there were significant problems, they would either review or revoke the permit. Unfortunately, there were no qualifiers put in place as to what that would look like. So, in doing my own research, I guess that's up for the council to determine, but some of the things that I have found, the questions that need to be asked, is losing revenue a valid concern to review it, potentially move it? Because I don't think anybody wants to see it closed down. Is unavailable handicap access a valid concern? Is a business owner having to take out a loan to cover payroll because of summer nights a valid concern? Can I sleep at night if this council doesn't keep its promise to at least, like Sandra said, you know, minimize the impacts on businesses? There are some businesses that really are hurting. Do we chase them out of downtown? Or do we try to work together to make the event as successful as possible? It's growing every week while being fair to the businesses that have been adversely affected and are afraid to speak out. So, I guess I'm going to be the voice for the people who are afraid. Thank you, Michelle, for stepping up. I know it wasn't easy, but for, I know there's a lot of people you're representing as well and it's difficult. But there are some definite sensitive issues going on. And I guess the bottom line is, we made a promise. What are we going to do about it? Thank you.
We recognize Alderman Sasso.
I think pretty much all the citizens really, you know, when we talk about citizens, really support summer nights. And there again, I think the challenge, as Alderman Doyle pointed out, is that there are some businesses that have expressed some concerns. I know as I went around and hit some of the businesses, I had heard one said, oh, yeah, we had a problem the first couple of weeks then traffic. There were some adjustments made and things improved. Sales may not have gone up, but at least they're getting a little more exposure. But there again, it's something that I think as a council and as a city, what we want to do is take a good look at this. I think we all want it to succeed. I don't think anybody does not want it to succeed because it has been successful. But what can we do to minimize any negative impacts that some businesses may experience? There are others that are experiencing a tremendous benefit. But let's look at how, if we need to do some tweaking, what can we do? What do we have to do? What do we have available to make it more successful for everyone? So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess where I'm concerned about is the perception out there that some of these businesses cannot fight City Hall. That is a troubling concern for me. A lot of these businesses that I hear about supporting the downtown summer nights have emailed me and said that they are losing money, but they still support the summer nights. Because what it does for them, it also brings an awareness to the public, not just on Thursday. What I mean by that is that the people are coming through and taking a look at the businesses, may not be purchasing anything at that time. But what that does for the businesses that I've been reading the correspondence on is that they're seeing an uptick in their business afterwards. So, overall, their businesses are improving. Again, I kind of want to stress the point about if businesses are feeling intimidated, I'm still welcome to hear their concerns. Right now, I'd like to encourage that, coming forward to that. And so, if Alderman Mason is making that motion so that we can hear from those other businesses, such as Botticelli's, if they do have some concerns, I'd like to hear them. So far, they haven't heard that. And I'm really concerned about the businesses that feel they cannot fight City Hall or they're threatened in a secondary means such as, we're not going to support your business because you don't, that bothers me. If that type of tone is being taken place within the city, I don't appreciate things like that. Maybe this next part is a question for our city attorney, but for example, there was a suggestion made that handicap accessible places are a hurdle to overcome. Do we not have ADA accessible facilities for the city, specifically and generally, on the streets, for example, and also for the businesses? What I mean by is handicap accessible. Because I did notice, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting or babbling here, but if I may, is that I did see the two people in wheelchairs, with the motorized wheelchairs. And they seemed to be getting around okay at the time I was observing them. So, I was just curious if I may address this question to the city attorney about the ADA accessibility.
We recognize your city attorney, Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe throughout downtown, the sidewalks are handicap accessible. I know that there's been a strong initiative on the part of the city council in years past to make those changes. So, I think that exists within the public right of way. With regard to any particular building, that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. Virtually all the buildings in the downtown area predate the enactment of the ADA. So, until there's a significant modification, there's probably not going to be a real strong obligation on the part of the owners of those facilities to meet the full obligation. So, I can't really answer the question generally with regard to the buildings downtown. But in the right of way, I believe that we have very good ADA compliance.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was hearing that there was a suggestion that perhaps one of the considerations for summer nights is the ADA accessibility. And I just wanted to make sure that we are complying with all the ADA guidelines or requirements. And I think the city attorney answered those concerns for me. And I know there's some other issues that were presented here tonight, too, as a guideline or a perception of having the checkoff list. And I think we can address those if those businesses that are concerned about the summer nights, if they would really do come forward and address those concerns with us and not be intimidated. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
We recognize Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the discussion to my colleagues. I appreciate it. I do want to address a couple of the comments that have been made, and I believe Alderman Doyle touched on it. But the idea that we haven't heard from any of the businesses that have raised concerns or brought forward suggestions, just before the meeting, I decided to print off just a few of them that were sent to the entire city. And they date back all the way to May 2nd from Ms. Michelle Peregrin. We have another one on May 2nd from Kelly Cotton. Another one on May 3rd from the owner of Dublin Square. It troubles me to think that we're sitting up here saying that we haven't heard from any of those businesses. I see the name of every city council member on most of these emails. And I guess that troubles me. I think it's important, and the reason I'm bringing this forward is that to make sure that we take the time to listen. And I think it's an obligation of our office that we take the time to listen. And some of the things that I have been hearing that have also been addressed in many of these emails, those in support and those that also have some concerns and issues, but even the ones that have said, I support it. Prime example, I pulled up an email here. He supports the summer nights event and enjoys the exposure to his business and sees a different sort of customer base coming around. However, during that night, he's seeing a 50% drop in his sales. My concern is, is I don't understand why we, as a city, can't help facilitate some communication and make this event, as Ms. Swan said, a community-involved event. Let's get places like the Elks Theater. Let's get places like Botticelli's and Elmonico's and offer them a way to participate in a community event. They're a part of our community, but they aren't involved right now. And I guess that's what I'm looking for, is how can we make this a better event, a more positive impact, not only today and for this year, but for the future as well? I like the vision. I think it's great. Somebody mentioned earlier Jacksonville, Florida, and it kind of reminded me of some great memories, actually, of the Jacksonville landing. I used to spend almost every Saturday and Friday night there. Wonderful place, very similar to what our idea of the Main Street Square. They held events there and they had businesses locally that participated in those events. And I guess some of those memories that I have and some of that background from that experience from Jacksonville, Florida, while I was serving in the Navy, I see what the potential of this can be. And I think it can be bigger and better than even any of us imagine and even more than I can imagine. But the main point is, is that the businesses that know how to move this forward are the businesses that are right down there on the ground level doing it every day. And I think there's going to be some different aspects that we're going to get back. There's some that we're getting back directly from those, directly involved within the proximity of the summer nights event and right across the street from the Main Street Square. And that perspective is going to be different than those down the road. So, I think that we need to start listening to how we can make this better. I would also like just to mention some of the suggestions that I have heard that have been mentioned, and I'll be brief here. But some of the suggestions I have heard is the timing of the street closure in the beginning of the event. A few people have actually mentioned possibly exploring the idea of extending this event later into the night, which I thought was an interesting idea. And it's something that I think we should maybe have in a discussion. And that was mentioned by Alderman Robertson. I appreciate that. Another one of them was, of course, the ability of the downtown businesses to spill out onto the street and be a part of this event. And of course, there is the concern about our current standing ordinances, which was mentioned by Alderman Peterson. And I appreciate that. And last of all, the ADA accessibility and the timing, these are all aspects that I think we can explore and make it a more positive impact for everyone involved. Thank you. I'll yield.
Thank you. And before we go to the other council memberlights who've already spoken, we will go to Dave Davis. Alderman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Success isn't easy, is it? I've heard from a lot of folks. I've heard a lot of positive responses. I've heard some people speak that, some issues that they're having with it. First and foremost, I think we need to address this for what it really is. And yes, we have some concerns about summer nights. There are businesses that have concerns about summer nights. But let's be realistic. We're dealing with one night a week. Six months down the road, when we open Main Street Square, we may be dealing with three, four, or seven nights a week. If the planners for that program are correct with their optimism, we may have this type of success and the pain that goes with it on a very regular basis. As an independent businessperson, I always find it interesting because I spend thousands of dollars a year to increase people's awareness about me. In fact, I joke that I spend thousands of dollars a year to stroke my ego because sometimes that's all I think I get out of some of the advertising that I do. This event puts people on the street in front of businesses. They get the exposure. Now, whether the businesses capitalize on that exposure, to some extent, is up to those I spoke to one that they stay open a little later. They happen to have a product that they are selling and making it available that they will keep that product around until 9:30 or so. And the folks that buy the product can come back and pick it up and take it home. I shared with one of the other council this morning, or this afternoon, it reminds me of, as a high school kid in a carryout in a small town, that the farmers came to town on Friday night, bought their groceries. We put it in the walk-in cooler. They went across the street and had a steak dinner and a beer. And at 10 o'clock in this small town, we knew their cars and they weren't locked. And we delivered their groceries to the backseat of their car because that's what made the Friday night and that little business thrive. We made it easy to be part of that community. And that easy is the thing that really concerns me. It hasn't been that many months ago, even weeks ago, that some of the same members of the council that are asking these very legitimate questions were asking another set of questions. Why is it so difficult to do business on second floor? Why is it that we have made this a world of speed bumps? Why is it that all of these developers are going to Sioux Falls and Billings? Are we doing the same thing with the promotion of our downtown area? Are we creating speed bumps because there's a little bit of a concern here, there's a little bit of a concern there? Now, I'm the first to admit, as an independent businessperson, if it were my business that was being affected, I would probably have a much more pointed view of how it is impacting me. But after this many years, I'd also be finding a way to capitalize on it. And that's where I'm really more than happy to champion some of the ideas that I'm hearing tonight. For instance, that those downtown businesses have an opportunity to have sidewalk vending, that those downtown businesses have the opportunity to have the initiative to be the entrepreneurs that they are and to move forward. That will come through some of the open discussion that's being suggested tonight. That won't come if we shut down this program. And I think that's a very serious caution that I want to make sure that we face. Are we, in fact, with these speed bumps, willing to shut down summer nights? Are we willing to send out the negative message to planners of future promotions at Main Street Square or other places around town? At the entertainers that may want to be involved there? At the local businesses that may want to sponsor? And even to the public who may want to come to those events? Are we willing to create a series of speed bumps to where they simply won't attend? We simply won't have those? It'll simply be like second floor again and they'll go to Sioux Falls or Billings? That's the concern and the worry that I have. Now, there's a lot of personalities that have shown up throughout this and that's probably one of the greatest concerns that I've got. I think there's an awful lot of folks that want the right thing. The word chill comes to mind right now. The word chill comes to mind right now, and I think we need to take a step back and chill. Because quite frankly, I'm seeing some folks from both sides of this issue who have drawn a line in the sand and aren't working towards the positive end, but rather are working to show just where their line is in the sand. And that concerns me. I think we need to work on the package of how we make the events in 2012 better. Alderman Mason has brought up the idea of having an additional special council meeting for those discussion purposes. And I would very much support a special meeting for the discussion purposes and to be able to hear out everyone's opinion. I'm a little concerned if the intent of that is not to continue, or in some way for it not to continue throughout this year. It was mentioned tonight that we have an obligation to listen, and as council people, we absolutely do. And I think those special, a special council meeting could be our opportunity to hear really what it is that people want to tell us. It reminds me of a businessperson, once again, in my small, little town that I grew up, that a gentleman would always say, "Well, someone told me that this was wrong in his store." What he usually meant was his wife Lola had told him, but someone had told him. The world is full of someones. I would like to give those someones the opportunity to step forward and be heard in an environment that they aren't fearful. But in the meantime, not only do we as a council have an obligation to listen, more importantly, we've been elected and given and accepted the obligation to lead. Tonight is our opportunity to lead, and I will very much support the motion to go forward with the remaining seven nights for this year, to let this program live out where it is. And I will also be supporting the motion, if Alderman Mason brings it forward, to have a special meeting so that we can discuss how we can improve this, how we can hear from the businesspeople that have concerns, so we can hear from the citizens who may have concerns, and we can make this package, this event, better. And also, and more importantly, that we can set the groundwork for all of the events that are going to be coming two, three, and hopefully, seven nights a week in Main Street Square. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll recognize Alderman Wright.
Dave said it well, and as I said earlier, I'll support it, and I support Alderman Mason's deal to do some more discussion later on. But I think a message ought to go out through our good Rapid City Journal, and anyone sitting in this room that this council is, is not someone to be afraid of, it's someone they can talk to and deal with. And I know my number's in the phone book, and my address is in the phone book. Please don't call between 9:00 or 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM, but we're wide open, and we need to hear. And I have not seen these emails or anything that was negative, other than I've got one from Michelle, and I think I got one from Vera. And I think those issues through Sandra's work, a lot of things can be resolved. I just have not seen a lot of negative, and I've seen an awful lot of positive. So I think we need to proceed with this, finish the year, and make it better for the future. And I think if we can get the word out to the public that this council is user-friendly, I yield.
Thank you, Alderman Wright. We'll recognize Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure you understand where my comments are coming from. I support having a special council meeting. I have got copies of those four or five initial people, and businesses and that too, yes. We all got them, Alderman Mason and that. But I support your concept of having that because I am concerned that the others that we keep hearing about, the charge was that they were intimidated by us, not by other businesses at the time. I want to make sure that they understand, we will set up a special venue for them to come and talk with us. Individually, as Jerry just said, come down here as a group. We're not that intimidated. We want to invite people to come down. That's why I support your motion on that. And I would hope that other people besides Michelle and them would come down where we can discuss, and we can come up with some good ideas and that. It isn't that I haven't heard the other four or five. Yes, I have, and I've talked to them too. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Alderwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate to conditionally approve for one to two more weeks so that that feedback can come forward? Prior to, I mean, and I've got to say, the reason that I'm concerned about that is if even one business goes out of business because they weren't able to recoup the revenue lost over, you know, basically, they're forfeiting two weeks' worth of business over the summer during the time when they generate that revenue. Are we going to be okay with that? Thank you.
We'll recognize Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recap on a couple of the comments and just touch on a few things. First, let me extend an apology. I did in no way mean to imply that any of my colleagues were not paying attention, but it, I guess there was obviously some miscommunication and just not hearing that concerning, receiving some of these concerns and things. Additionally, I did want to make it clear that I don't believe anyone here has proposed or has ever intended ending the Summer Nights event. I don't really know where that's coming from, and I don't see, nor have I heard, those concerns. I guess I've gotten emails from a few peoples saying they were told to email us because they were concerned about Summer Nights shutting down, and I just don't know where that's being generated from. Overall, I think the main intention here is to see how we can get, again, more community involvement and grow this into something that is a positive thing for everyone involved. As is with anything like this, I think that you do inherently get a little bit of a feedback on where, as Alderman Davis said, there are people that feel like they have to cut out their little corner. And I guess I want to make this more into a gradient of participation, that everyone gets a chance to participate in this. Not where one person or even a few people are feeling isolated from the event. I'm hoping that we can listen to everyone's concerns and make this, as said, a community event. Lastly, to Ms. Doyle's recommendation, I haven't had a lot of time to think about that, but I did want to say that I, thinking about it, given such kind of short notice, but two weeks, that's a, that's an interesting concept, and I would hope that maybe we would consider that. If we can improve it this year, if that seems feasible, and get some of those concerns this year, and get ready for next year, that might be the route to go. I'm not sure. But I do welcome the suggestion, and maybe a little further deliberation on that idea should be taken.
Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? Seeing none, we will proceed to the vote, and the motion is to approve Summer Nights for the remainder of the season. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With one no from Charity Doyle. Item 53. Alderman Mason, would you read this into the record for us?
Summer Nights discussion by Alderman Jordan Mason and Alderman John Roberts. And I move to hold a special city council meeting at a time designated.
Do we have any suggestions on time? I thought we could hold it at either prior to a regular city council meeting or on perhaps the last Monday of a month.
Thank you, Mayor. I would welcome the suggestion of actually one of the last city council meetings, last Monday night city council meetings of the month.
I'm going to yield to, why don't we go directly to our council president, Dave Davis? And we'll come to our other lights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Mason, you brought up just a great point tonight, and initially, I was going to suggest that we tack this on before a meeting. One of the concerns that I've got is we have budget hearings that we need to get scheduled in, and we have a, obviously, a pretty serious time constraint that we need to walk through those. I'm not looking to put this off for the purpose of putting it off, but I'm not, I'm not willing to make this more important than the budget hearing. It also has come to grips tonight from all of the discussions that this isn't a 10- or 15-minute discussion prior to a budget hearing. This has the potential to be an evening meeting with a lot of folks, letting us in on their ideas of how this can make, how we can make this a better event, and events in the future better. So I really do believe we need a special meeting, but given the fact that we've now passed that we're continuing throughout the season, the timeliness of this, I think we can set it after the budget hearings. And I would suggest that we not worry about the date tonight until Ms. Sumption gets back, we get those budget hearing dates set, and then set a date for this accordingly. Would be my suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll recognize Alderwoman Peterson.
I agree that, because I know earlier today, I thought maybe we could do this in an hour before, before council, but it's going to be more extensive than that. So I would be supportive of Alderman Davis's suggestion that we kind of schedule it once we know when our budget meetings are. We kind of cut off conversation since we knew we were also going to be able to talk about 53, so there's still things that relate to 23 and 53, just the whole situation. And since this has started, Murphy's has opened, Independent Ale House is going to be opening, I forgot the name of the bar on top of Alex Johnson, it has opened. The Sears Building is going to be coming out with, I don't know, two or three different food establishments. So like it or not, competition is coming to the downtown businesses, whether we do Summer Night or, you know, what we do with Summer Night. There is competition coming, and so there's lots of other things that are going to be impacting the businesses, businesses down there. One of my thoughts was that, for instance, a restaurant like Botticelli's, they're going to benefit from Main Street Square, being across from Main Street Square all year long. But then they're going to have to put up, you know, on the other hand of that is they're going to have to put up with street events or, you know, having their flow constricted. And that was one reason why I had suggested that we try to move, move the pain and gain up and down Main Street so that we'd get business, get the people right in front of Botticelli's on one end, on the other end, right in front of the Thirsties and the Teacher Supply Store, you know, just kind of share the pain and gain. So I think there's lots of ways we can look at improving this, but I think the decisions that the council makes needs to keep in mind that really, we're looking at the future of how we're going to run downtown, because change is coming down there, and, you know, I'm sure some businesses are going to gain from it and some are going to lose for it. And I, you know, I hate for anyone to lose, but there's change coming, and we can't, you know, as council, we can try to mitigate damage, but we can't control it. So anyway, I will be in support of this, and I think and hope that people are old enough and adult enough to know that it's the squeaky wheel that gets oiled. And so, you know, so people have to squeak, and that means businesses that are suffering or whatever, they need to reiterate, because I know sometimes, at the very beginning, we got some negative feedback before it had even started. So I didn't hold that as much credence because it's like, well, wait and see, or maybe there was a lot of rain the first night or two, you know, so let's see how it plays out. So anyway, I do hope the businesses come because we want to try to make this a good product for everybody as best that we can. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be a question for Sandy, perhaps. I have a concern of getting the people to a special meeting. Could we, would you be the best source to help us get notification to all the businesses that be affected down there, that we could make sure that they know when that's, when the special meeting is set and when it goes, other than just notification paper that we might put out?
The Downtown Association, they consent on an email blast that would go to anybody that's a member. Now, if they're not a member of Rapid City Downtown Association, they're not going to get that email, but other than that, I don't know what other method we would use to contact them.
Okay, thank you. Would you concur, Dan? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll recognize Ron Sasso. Alderman Sasso?
I don't know if the Rapid City Journal may be able to add a request in the article of if any business would prefer to be anonymous to email any council member regarding their concerns. It's something, I, I think that, again, we all want to see this successful. We want to also look forward and see how we are going to operate if we have the type of success that is projected. So, but the more positive as well as negative feedback, that, if there's any negative feedback out there, and had an email from, you know, Elks Theater, I thought was, was great, on the one hand, on Thursday nights, they're not pulling in quite as much, but they've also had people say, "I didn't know you had a theater down here. It's only been here for 100 years." You know, those are the types of things that, that you look at. It's, on the one hand, it is a good problem to have, and it's a growing pain. And with growing pains, you know, that, that's, we can turn this into something very positive, but we have, but we also have to hear all sides of it. We need to hear both ends and be able to respond. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Alderwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Sandra, if I may. You might as well just pull your chair up there. My question is, do you feel, I guess, informed enough about the issues that have been brought forward to, to maybe get with your team and work out some potential solutions on your end for this special meeting, and we can be doing the same and just kind of see where we meet?
You mean prior to the meeting?
Correct.
Well...
Bring them to the meeting is what I'm asking. Are you prepared to, you know, go over the issues that have been brought forward and see what kind of solutions Summer Nights can offer to mitigate these, these challenges that have been addressed?
I guess I'm not quite sure I understand the question. I can't be prepared to mitigate the problems when I don't know what they are. I mean...
Well, some of the issues that have been brought forward over the last two weeks would be security, would be sticky streets is one I've heard a lot of, the businesses that are hurting, and, you know, some of these people believe that if, if the event can just be shifted, that it would alleviate that. I don't know that that's true, but it's worth looking at. So are you willing to just see what your staff, your team can come up with, and again, bring that to this special meeting so that we can...
Well, certainly. As a matter of fact, there, some of the people that were opposed met with some of the previous administration, and we were not invited. We would have preferred to have been invited because we can't know what the problems are. We can't adjust to them if we're not made aware. And keep in mind, these people are all volunteers. They work very hard to make Summer Nights happen, and we put a lot of hours into it. And we will be sure that we meet prior to the And we will be sure that we meet prior to the special meeting, so that we have all of our planning in place, and answer whatever questions we can, the best that we can, with the knowledge that we have in front of us.
And if you would like any of us there, please invite us. I mean, we, you know, I know you guys have worked hard. I think it's going to take a little bit of working harder, so that we can make 2012 a spectacular year for everybody, and alleviate as many of these concerns as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over the dates, just tentatively for a recommendation, and again, to reemphasize tentatively, and this could be changed, but September 2nd, 2011, given that the last night of the September, our Summer Nights ends on September 1st, 2011, according to the event permit, is that correct, Ms. Swan? September 1st?
That is correct.
Okay.
I would like to state, though, if you have a meeting on September 2nd, these people probably won't be able to come, because they're pretty tired, and most of us don't get to go on vacation in the summer, so they really have the right to take the long weekend for themselves and to enjoy that. So, I'd appreciate if we didn't do September 2nd.
Thank you for the input. Then, I guess, tentatively, I would move then to the next following Tuesday on September 6th, due to avoid any conflict.
Alderman Mason, I have the suggestion.
Any recommendations, Mayor Alderman?
I would like to make a recommendation, and first of all, I want to thank Alderman Davis for his idea. I think it's an excellent one, and that is to hold the special council meeting outside of City Hall. Either, he suggested the Elks, or Main Street Square, or the Doll, I think those are, so I will work with him and Bonnie Peterson to find a location. I would like to, I'd like to ask the council to please consider having this meeting after the 13th. I would like Ward Two to be fully represented, which includes downtown, so. And Bonnie Peterson mentioned that, yes, there could be a runoff, so we'll just have to take it as it comes, so. So, everyone understands the motion? And I'll be working with council leadership soon to set up a time and place. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 53A, abandoned houses. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. In working in Ward One on code enforcement issues and that, I ran into a situation, finding out that it's pretty much throughout the city, and the other wards and that. I have a house at 802 East Talent Street, that was abandoned over three years ago, probably pushing four years by now. Code enforcement's been out there time after time after time. We mowed, pushed snow, the house totally abandoned, busted windows out front, cannot find the owners, they're gone. The mortgage is with some bank that got lost someplace down in the shuffle, out, and we don't know where, India or where in the heck it's at. It got kicked up to Brad Solon. He sent out a certified letter to the last address, it's over thirty days. They didn't appeal, they haven't got anybody, any notice at all. Took it to the city attorney's office. Allison was put in charge of that. She has made call after call after call, she said, she can't get a return call from anything on this house. Meanwhile, the neighborhood, who's really works hard to keep their neighborhood up, is facing a house on the corner that has windows broken out, kids playing around there, can't even get the thing boarded up. I want to know, what it, what does it take for the city to finally be able to declare it abandoned, and be able to demo it? And I'll turn that question, if I may, to the city attorney.
We'll recognize our Assistant City Attorney, Joel Landine. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. We are aware of the house. In fact, I had indicated to Alderman Brown, I actually live in that neighborhood, and was driving home back to work from lunch one day, and called code enforcement when I got back to the office after lunch, and reported the house, and found out some of what Alderman Brown had found out. After we had a general review today, I spoke with Allison. At some point, we can just go in and demolish the home, but I think you have to appreciate that destroying a home for a city, taking of property like that, there's a lot of due process, it's called, involved in that, and procedures that need to be followed. I've asked Allison to look at and make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed on the notices. If they aren't, to get that done right away. And we have been getting the runaround a little bit. I believe one of the staff members did track down the alleged owners, or who the, the owners are shown in the property records, and they ended, indicated that, and it took a while to find them, that they no longer own the property. The bank had taken it over several years ago, but that isn't reflected in the property records at the Register of Deeds office. And the bank now won't get a hold of us. But, again, we can demolish the property, even if people aren't responding. We just need to make sure all the process has been followed. Again, I've directed her to do that, and that if, once all the process is followed, to get that in place as soon as possible, to then proceed with demolition of that property.
So, if I may, Mayor, I have another question. There's nothing, then, that we need to do from a council standpoint, or anything, to help give city attorney's office any more strength, any more ability to go in there quicker, sooner? Because somebody's going to get hurt.
I don't know there's anything you can do at this point. I would want to look at it some more. I mean, the city council can declare something a nuisance, but you still have due process requirements, and you've got to understand, when you're talking about tearing down a house, even if it's an abandoned house in a pretty poor shape, people have a lot of right to hearings and to dispute the destruction of their property. The part of the problem is trying to pin down exactly whose property this, this particular house is. At some point, I know there was a larger discussion, one of the bigger issues for the council is going to be staff time that could be dedicated to this, and also funding. I mean, it's fairly expensive to demolish a house. We've demolished them in the past. Traditionally, how that works is Brad Solon, from the Building Inspection Office, takes quotes and gets it demolished, but there's probably enough in the budget to do two, maybe three, at most, houses, demolition a year. So, and there's probably more than that that could really need, need to be done, if we wanted to dedicate the resources to do it. So, for this house in particular, I think the fastest way to get it down is going to be to look at what we've done for notices at this point, figure out what precisely needs to be done to cover us legally, get that in place as soon as possible, and then I would imagine within forty-five to probably at most sixty days, but again, I would want to look at the specifics in the International Property Maintenance Code. Again, we could get it demolished.
Well, I encourage you to do that, because if the weather starts turning cold, you're probably going to have somebody trying to live in there.
And I will qualify that, if at some point, the bank, who I believe at this point is the owner, does come in at the last minute and say, "We want to have all these hearings", we're probably going to have to provide those, which may delay it, but we could certainly update the council on this as it goes along, and keep you informed, so you understand that, and know where we're at in the process.
Can the city at least go and put some plywood over the broken windows and that, so some kid isn't going to get hurt trying to peek in?
Yes, I believe we could, we could do something to secure the property, or discuss, and probably sooner than a demolition.
I would encourage we get that going right away, and perhaps Chief Mike might need a place to try to work on it, maybe practice fires. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Recognize Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Brown, for bringing this up. I, I guess I would have the question of whether or not this, there may be some sort of commercial opportunities here, or a way that the city could incentivize a private commercial, you know, company or corporation to move in and look at tearing down some of these buildings and developing something in its place. I'm all for getting rid of some of these blighted areas, but additionally, I'm also for growth, I'm for business, and if there's a way that we could figure out a way to make this lemon into some lemonade, it seems to be the season for that, so I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I had some similar concerns, because this house is an issue, but there's also a fair number of houses that have busted windows and are abandoned, and I would like to explore how we could get those boarded up, or if boarding them up is the best way to ensure safety. I, you know, greater minds can work on that, but we, you know, the, I'd like to expand this beyond just this one house, and is it possible, Mr. Landine, to take possession of a house as opposed to tearing it down? Or does the city only have the right to tear it down?
Joel?
I believe the city's right would be to tear it down, remove, it essentially is a nuisance to remove the nuisance condition. They would still own the property. What does happen often, though, in the, in the case of an abandoned property, is we then assess the cost of that demolition back on the property, and then it comes on the tax bill, and eventually, the property is sold on a tax lien, so that's how it usually works.
So, we wouldn't be able to, say, take a property that, say, if like Habitat for Humanity, or someone wanted to, you know, I just didn't know if the city had any right to be able to eventually get to the process of where it's been abandoned and take possession, where you could still possibly use some of these houses?
Again, no. The only, the only mechanism by which the city could obtain the title to the property would be exercise of eminent domain, which isn't exactly a quick process, so, and would involve quite a bit of work, and there would probably be some challenges to whether or not that was appropriate use of eminent domain.
Okay. What department, or who would be utilized to board up these houses, for the city to do that?
I imagine it would be code enforcement, and I know that the Community Resources Director has some opinions, and one of the, the issues they've had is the feeling that they're becoming a, essentially, property maintenance for, for private landowners. You know, one of the things, there's aesthetic issues that sometimes code enforcement deals with. If somebody's house needs to be painted, and it's really bad, and we get complaints, and we go in and say, "This is in violation," and somebody says, "Well, I can't afford to do it," or they just don't, are we going to paint their house for them? And then, even if that gets assessed back on the property, you know, how far do we go? And that's really a question for council to answer. Now, I think with the issue of boarding up windows, that's pretty easy. It's a safety issue. Going out, slapping on some plywood, what we would probably do, much like we do for lawns, we go out, we get quotes, and there's local businesses that then we retain and pay to go out and do that. We would probably identify some people, ask for quotes, and then have them go out and secure those properties. And then, we would pay for that and assess it back to the property, just like mowing or other code enforcement issues.
Okay. The, thank you. The more, longer I'm on the council, the more I realize that we really need to beef up our code enforcement. We have, you know, these houses that are blighted in neighborhoods, where people work real hard to try to improve their neighborhoods, and, you know, the city drops the ball and doesn't require people to do the, do the minimums, to, you know, like, paint their house, or fix their roof, or something that's really almost blighted. So, you have the blighted, you have the almost blighted. And, and then, we have with billboard companies also, that avoid maintaining their signs. We really have a, a lot of code enforcement issues in this city, and so, I, it comes budget time, I think I'll be exploring that more closely, to what we can do as far as fees, to pay for the real cost of code enforcement, and also to help, because I think it's a real shame, like the lady tonight that had her yard of the month, you have this yard of the month person, perhaps living next door to a person that's not doing anything to take care of their home, or it's a landlord that really, possibly, the house needs to be condemned, but it's still, they're doing some minimums. So, we need to look at that, and see what we can do to help, help neighbors. I don't want to, you know, call in the cops or anything like that, but we do need to explore that, as a council. Thank you.
We'll recognize Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. After hearing some of the comments, it kind of reminds me of a saying that was frankly grounded to my head, because I tend to complicate things, and as they said in the military, I tend to nuke things to obliteration. But, the saying is, the simplest solution is often the best solution. And while hearing Mr. Landine's legal analysis of this concerning the property rights, it seems to me that, it sounds like there would be a very complex process to acquire that, and then to move forward. At the end, other end of the idea, I guess I'm wondering, and I guess I would direct this question to our Growth Management Director, if there's some sort of zoning or incentives that we could do as a city to encourage someone else to take on this problem, to encourage possibly incentivizing the property owners themselves to improve their property through some sort of economic way, or to encourage some sort of company to revitalize that area? And I would direct that to our Growth Management Director. Thank you.
We'll recognize Brett Limbaugh.
You know, there's a, always going to be a carrots and sticks approach to this, this problem, and this, and these types of issues. I've wrestled with property maintenance before in other cities, and I think you can do so much to try to legislate it, to try and board up houses, but you also, on the other side, need to provide some incentive for a property owner to get discount for materials to fix up their homes, or to assemble some properties, so that they are redevelopable, something that a commercial developer, or someone who wanted to do, say, a townhome or attached structure, would feel that they could get their money back on. And, you know, I think what I would always do is look to some other cities that have been severely impacted by vacant and abandoned housing. I don't think we have to look too much further than Phoenix, and Las Vegas, and Florida, where you've seen the massive foreclosed properties, and I'm sure they're wrestling with this too, and probably have some ideas that we could borrow. So, if you'd give me some time, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you. I guess the simplest solution that I guess I'm looking for is, kind of reminds me out of a scene out of the Tom Sawyer book, the classic by Mark Twain, where Tom Sawyer got somebody else to do the whitewashing of the fence, and frankly, if somebody else would take on this task for us, and generate some sales tax additionally for the city, it seems like a win-win for everyone involved. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We do not have a motion. I would recommend a motion that we take this to Public Works for further discussion and a report on 802 East Talent, and how we move forward with the other properties.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson, and a second by Roberts. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye? Close motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now into public hearing items, items 54 through 65. We do not have any speaker request forms. Would anybody like to speak on items 54 through 65? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson, open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close motion carries. Anybody like to speak on items 54 through 65? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion by Davis, and a second by Peterson, to close the public hearing on items 54 through 65. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close motion carries. Item 54, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. 54, number 10, SVA 008, a request by Renter and Associates LLC for Skyline Pines East LLP for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light, conduit, water, and sewer along a portion of Fairmont Boulevard, as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located west of Mount Rushmore Road, and north of Tower Road at the western terrace of Cathedral Drive. I move that we continue the item to August 1st.
Okay. Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. All in favor... Okay. Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we have a consent public hearing items, items 55 through 60. Would anybody like to remove any of these items, 55 through 60? If not, do we have a motion to approve items 55 through 60? Motion by Davis, second by Mason. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now to the end of the consent public hearing item calendar, and we go on to items 61 through 65. Alderman Mason, would you read these into the record for us?
Yes. Number 11 RZ008, second reading of ordinance 5726 in ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from general commercial district to medium density residential district for a portion of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section 16, T N R A E B H M of the Pennington County, more fully described as follows, commencing at the southwestern corner of section 16. Sorry, lost. A distance of 14, 16 feet to a point on the northerly edge of East Minnesota Street right of way and the point of beginning. Motion, or, I'm sorry, thence first course along the northerly edge of said East Minnesota Street right of way, a distance of 522 feet.
Alderman Mason?
Yes.
You can skip to the last sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Just say, "Located east of intersection of East Minnesota and Marlin Drive."
Yes. So, working east of Minnesota Street and Marlin Drive and move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll be brief. Second reading of ordinance, 5727, in ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning to within described property as requested by Dream Design for a rezoning from low density residential to district to medium density residential district and at the intersection of East Minnesota Street and Marlin Drive, and I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next is second reading of ordinance 5728, amending section 17.06 of the Rapid City Municipal Code to rezone within described property by Dream Design International from low density residential to district to medium density residential, and that is for East Minnesota Street and Marlin Drive, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 64.
To authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right protest, a future assessment for the installation of curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light, conduit, and sewer for the, along west of Nike Road and that abuts the track A of Prairie Meadows subdivision, and I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 65.
A request by Sparilec Consulting Incorporated for variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light, conduit, and sewer, and to reduce the pavement width from 40 feet to 20 feet along west Nike Road as it abuts the property as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson, to approve with stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. The total bill list this evening is $8,516,820.43.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. Any discussion on the bill list? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No executive session tonight?
That's right.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by, right?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
We're going to have a good...